Good evening and welcome to the June 11th City Council meeting and public forum. And we will begin this day with a pledge of allegiance today in honor of, oh, this is in honor of Memorial Day or is it in honor of Flag Day?
Flag Day.
Flag Day. Memorial Day you must have already done.
Yes.
In honor of Flag Day, which is the 14th coming along. And we are, have the pleasure of having representatives from Girl Scout Troop 20397. And so I wonder if you'd all come forward and I'll introduce you. Brownie Freya Gilbert, which one of you is Freya? Freya Gilbert, Beth Bowman, Adriana Lemee, and Jaina Thompson. And they are here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if you'd all please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Well done. And now we also have a distinction of an honor coming to us through Friends of Trees. And I wonder if you would all like to come up or how, I'm not sure how you're planning to do this. I'm going to turn it to you, Eric.
I will read the award.
Perfect.
And then pass it on to you representing the city. So thank you very much. Friends of Trees is pleased to work with the city of Eugene as partners in planting and caring for our city's trees. Well, Friends of Trees primarily partners with the urban forestry department. We also work with great people in the Eugene Outdoors program to engage volunteers to plant trees in parks and natural areas with Damon joiners, surface maintenance crews, along with folks in neighborhoods, transportation, and planning departments. The city of Eugene Urban Forestry Department over the last four years has gone from a department in stasis to a department that regularly receives national recognition. Top to bottom, the staff are characterized by excellence and professionalism. Nearly every urban forestry staffer is an International Society of Arborette Culture certified arborist. Nine staff are certified municipal specialists and three staff are master arborists, certified master arborists, the highest level of certification in the field. This is really unheard of for a city of our size. These folks are recognized as at the pinnacle of their profession. At each meeting I have with city staff, I am impressed by the widespread expectation of excellence and continual striving to get better and do work more efficiently. City urban forestry staff do great work to maintain and protect our urban forest. Staff are faced with the challenge presented by the triple bottom line concept, how to balance the need for growth and economic development with tree preservation and sustainability that leads to the social, ecological, and public health benefits that trees provide. Equity in urban forestry is another key issue that's being taken on more. I've been to several public meetings in the field with diverse stakeholders, looking at whether trees should be preserved or removed when in conflict with hardscape. At each meeting, I've been deeply impressed with how respectful staff were to all parties and the effort that went into finding the best outcome possible. Connecting people to urban forests will ensure a prosperous future for Eugene. Gives me great pleasure to present Friends of Trees Community Partner Award for 2018 to the city of Eugene. Thank you.
I just want to take a minute to acknowledge Eric Burke and the work of our urban foresters. We all know how important trees are in our community and it is partners like Friends of Trees who make so much progress working on these trees. 1600 trees this year. They've worked in a partnership with our urban forest and are partners for sustainable school, which is a five-week educational program. They made a huge difference on our landscape by treating every day, every rep. It feels like every neighborhood I go to, I find another whole row of trees that's been planted. So thank you very much, your volunteers out there on cold rainy Saturday morning, started to dig holes and plant trees. It makes a huge difference in our community. Thank you so much for this award and for everyone doing work for you.
Now I get to put it right here. Okay. Now I think we are ready to open the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your award if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And it looks like we have 11 people to speak. And the first is Maddie Atkins, followed by Nathan Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Maddie Atkins. My city of residence is Eugene. And I am a rising sophomore at the University of Oregon. So I read the news every morning and I'm regularly met with stories of disaster and tragedy and crime. And it's an overwhelming and heartbreaking process, but I do it every morning because I want to stay informed, because being informed feels okay. Even if you don't have control over the issues that are happening, you can at least be aware of them. But on the morning of May 18th, I read yet another headline that 10 young people had died in a school shooting, this time in Santa Fe, Texas. And I realized that knowing simply is not enough, because if you know and you do not act, then the world will be no better off. If you know and you do not act, then things will never change, just as things never changed after the shooting in Parkland, Florida, just as things never changed after the shooting in Sandy Hook, or the estimated 312 incidents of gunfire on school grounds in the United States since 2013. This year, we have experienced an average rate of one school shooting per week. It's time this conversation was had, because knowing now isn't enough, because knowing won't save young people's lives. The Federal Commission on Student Safety was formed after the shooting in Parkland, Florida, and it will be headed up by U.S. Education Secretary Betsy DeVos. Betsy DeVos has declared that the commission will not examine the role of guns in school shootings. Well, school safety is intimately tied to the conversation about guns, so this is an egregious error. What this makes clear is that nothing is going to happen at the federal level. And what should also be very clear is that the cost of an action is too high to wait. So the reason I'm standing before you today is because we must work to make things happen at the state level. And this resolution that I'm presenting to you, supporting the safety of Eugene youth, is the first step. The support of Eugene as a city, coupled with committed advocacy in Salem, will make a huge difference on this issue. And the journey to Salem starts right here at home in Eugene, Oregon. Now I want to pause and remember that 1998 was not that long ago. The 20th anniversary of the Thurston High School shooting happened just days after the shooting in Santa Fe. And that tragedy left a mark on our community, one that we will never forget, but we will learn from it. What we are asking for today is a common sense strategy. We are asking for commitment to protect young people, make our halls of education a safe place, so that our future leaders can become all that they were meant to be. Please consider stating as a city, your support and commitment to this issue by passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nathan Nelson, followed by Emma Hamilton.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Nelson and I'm, my city of residence is Highland, Utah. Actually, I come tonight as one of the, part of the ownership group of the Woodleaf Village Apartment Community, which is being considered tonight for renewal of the low-income housing rental property tax exemption, LRTD, I think is how we say it, right? And I'd like to just talk for a few minutes about the affordable housing crisis that is here in Eugene, as well as throughout the country, and what our organization is, seeks to accomplish in trying to be a part of the solution. Our firm has owned and operated over 50 affordable rate communities throughout the United States. And a big focus of our mission is to provide safe, affordable housing for families and residents, and our residents. Earlier this spring, we purchased the Woodleaf Apartments in Eugene and are excited to be a part of the affordable housing community here, partnering with Cornerstone Community to again be part of that affordable housing solution. These section, these low-income housing properties are, have an interesting dynamic. They are funded originally in their development with tax credits typically, which demands that they stay under the same ownership for a period of 15, and in this case, extended until 20 years. And after this 20, during this 20-year period, like any building, these properties begin to experience deferred maintenance and other duress typical of any property, which has a detrimental effect over time to the sense of community within those, within those properties. One of our goals is to come in and provide a restorative initiative to continue and maintain that element of community and to ensure that there is, that the housing is safe and that it can remain affordable. Woodleaf Village is interesting in that it caters to the lowest, to residents whose incomes are in the lowest quartile of all residents here in Eugene. To live in, to live in Woodleaf Village, you must make no more than 50% of the area median income. And the rental rates are correspondingly capped as well. And so with that in mind, it's our objective and our purpose to come, to come into the property here now as new owners, partnering with a great local nonprofit organization to make the necessary repairs, new roofs, new deck repairs, et cetera, to reinvest into the community and make, and ensure that the property is well maintained for the next 20 to, and 30 years and beyond. Without the low-income exemption, the property will no longer be economically viable and we look forward to a positive vote tonight. Thank you for your time and thanks for hosting me.
Thank you. Next is Emma Hamilton, followed by David Picione.
Hi, good evening. My name's Emma Hamilton and I'm from Vancouver. Well, I'm originally from Utah, but I'm currently living in Vancouver, Washington. I'm down here a few times as I've got the Woodleaf Village that I'm here to speak on behalf of. So I'm a representative of Peak Living. We manage Woodleaf Village Apartment Homes, which is located at 745 Woodleaf Lane. I've come to speak on behalf of the community and its residents, to ask the city of Eugene to renew the tax exemption to Woodleaf Village. Our community homes a variety of residents, from families, elderly. And these residents of our community make less, like Nathan was saying, than 50% of the annual median income for this area. The rents currently range from $496 for a two-bedroom to $575 for a three-bedroom. To qualify to live in this community, the household annual income must be below $20,006,500 for one occupant, up to $39,750 for seven occupants. If you do the math, this is below minimum wage. The residents here, because of the majority of the residents are very low income, the prior ownership and management had some services in place to assist them, and we want to keep these services in place. Some of the current services, just so that you know what we're doing, that are provided is the extra helping program, which provides fresh produce to the entire community twice a month. We have the Active Kids Program, which provides fun activities twice a month. Homework Club every Monday, where the children get a after-school snack and assistance with their homework. We've got the Metropole Monday, where bread is donated to the residents in the community. The Positive Parenting Program, once a month encourages parents to receive coaching on children's behavior and work toward a happier family life. A wellness coach drops in once a month to coach on health and overall wellness. All of these programs are great, but we would love to offer more. We would like to offer educational classes for anyone that would like to attend, such as how-to electronics, computer education, resume preparation, job interview preparation, cooking classes, anything that can help them to that next step in their life. We would also like to put together a program where assistance can be offered to the new residents, such as mattresses, blankets, sheets, the things that they don't and they can't afford upon move-in. You know, most of our residents rely on and appreciate the current services that are in place. And if the city of Eugene chooses to renew the state tax exemption, many of the existing and additional future planned activities that I mentioned earlier could be possible to them. So thank you very much for your consideration in this very important matter.
Thank you. David Picione, followed by William O'Brien.
Hi, I'm David Ivan Picione. And injustice thrives in ignorance, ignorance. I'm referring to the Appointed Auditor Initiative that failed. I really feel a lot of sorrow and hurt and just betrayal from the city councilors who put a challenging initiative against one that was well-founded. And I'm also expressing my sorrow that the ignorant, that the population of Eugene could not see the, that maneuver and did not vote well for us to get a independent elected auditor. Thank you.
Thank you. William O'Brien, followed by Brian Nestler.
I just have some latest news on historical Hayward Field. This is June 11th, it's today. This is East Grand Stance supporters. So basically quoting the article, "In our opinion of this morning, June 11th, the University of Oregon is in noncompliance with State Statute, ORS 358, period 653. We checked this with the State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, this morning. The latest offer just last week of mitigation standards by the university to the SHPO was deemed inadequate by the State HCC, City Code, Chapter 8, Period 005, Quote 13, Quote C. Clearly states that a permit is invalidated if, when it is executed, is used in to violate any other law. Noncompliance with ORS 358.653 constitutes a violation of state law. And so it is our opinion today's work violates and invalidates the demolition permit." When I speak of today's work, I'm talking about the initial, taking apart of the East Grand Stance. It's offense Dan. It's basically Phil Knight's company. It's basically Phil Knight's university. No public process whatsoever. No, no following planning, planning committee with the architectural school. If I have about a minute or two left, I'll keep going. Boy, isn't that wonderful? Sorry about that. Thing moves so fast, you know? Okay. Okay, attempts to reach officials at the city of Eugene and state historical presence, state historical work unsuccessful. Hayward Field must be renovated, renovated. Okay, we all know that. All right. Okay, I'm done. I really hope that this community will wake up and save Hayward Field, because this new stadium is a shell game. It's a shell game between Nike, the donors, the donors that donate to the university gets shelled off to Nike, it gets shelled off to Phil and Penny Nike. That's my opinion. And I'll keep going till you tell me the time is up. Some really great minds have come together on this. You're only going to get a World Track and Field Championship in 2021. It's a one event deal. Whether you get the NCAAs, or you get the national championships, or you get the Olympic trials in 2000. Okay.
Thank you. Brian Nestler, followed by Darcy Phillips. Oh, nope, sorry. Wait, Darcy, followed by Ella Nestler.
Couple of minutes to speak after I do. I'm Brian Nestler and I hope all of you received a copy of the letter that I sent into the city manager. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about, I live here in Eugene, I live at Woodleaf Village, I'm a resident there. I just, I, if you've read the letter, you know, I specifically called it Woodleaf Village Community for a very important reason, because Woodleaf Village is a community. It's a community of people who are economically challenged, but they work together to lift each other up. Just today at the, was the last homework club that they spoke about. All the kids, they had pizza provided by the company. And we had pizza and played games and then did a lot of fun things. But throughout the year, there were volunteers in there, myself, I'm a teacher. I got cancer and had to give that up, but my son's there. He's a brilliant mathematics student and he was, he's there to help them, they help each other. That's what we, that's what it is where we live. It's a, it's a community that helps each other. One of the things that I wanted to tell you about tonight was my neighbor, I told her that I was coming here. I didn't spread it too far out, because people would be panicked if they thought something was going to happen there. But she told me that when she was attending the University of Oregon, her architectural professor took the whole class out to Woodleaf Village to show them what affordable housing can look like when it's really done at its best. And she's remembered that all these years and she lives there now and she couldn't be happier, just like the rest of us. The services that they provide, that they're able to provide now, that we could lose, are things that help us make it through every month. It's food. My daughter that's going to come up and talk to you in just a minute, she's going to tell you she has celiac's. They know that, the people that go get the extra helping food and they always try to come in with a little extra gluten-free bread for us if they can, or something like that. If you've gone even to Costco, it's almost $10 for two loaves of bread for her. And she loves toast, so. I can go through a lot of that in a month. Woodleaf Village, I consider it kind of the crown jewel of affordable housing in Eugene. And it, their crown, am I, on yellow, what's that, a minute?
Twelve, 12 seconds to go.
Oh my God. Okay, I'll wrap it up. I just want to make sure the crown continues to shine brightly. And for that to happen, we need that property tax exemption. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ella Nestler?
I always do small stuff. Okay. Hello, my name is Ella Corry-Munusso-McKenzie. I live at Woodleaf Village. When, when people call, when people like ask me where I live, I always say I live in Woodleaf Village, the happiest place I could be. And, and so, sorry. And, well, I really like that we always do like homework club, kids' club, kids' chef. And yeah, just like my dad said, just today, we did the last of, like, the end of, close to the end of the school year celebration. And we had a party, we did a lot of stuff. It was really fun. And, um, um, and I really enjoyed living here. I, I have celiac's disease. On extra helping day, they always get, at least, they always get fruits and vegetables and like, um, and like other stuff too, that's like gluten-free, because they know, because they know that I have celiac's disease. And well, everybody in the property, everybody who lives there, well, is always, well, um, well, we all like living here, living, and living at Woodleaf Village. And we are really hoping that we can stay at Woodleaf Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Darcy Phillips, followed by Eric Jackson.
Well, I don't know how I'm supposed to follow that, but thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time this evening. My name is Darcy Phillips. I reside in Eugene in Councilor Pryor's ward, and I'm here on behalf of Cornerstone Community Housing as their executive director and Peak Capital as a partner in affordable housing. As you know, Cornerstone has a long history of providing affordable housing in Lane County. One of the tools that's allowed us to continue to develop and maintain affordable housing is the 20-year low-income rental housing property tax exemption. This tax exemption has been imperative in the financial stability of properties like Woodleaf Village. Because the rents in affordable housing developments are deeply discounted, and I might add, they are required to remain discounted 40 to 60 years. This exemption is essential to providing a minimal level of cash flow for general maintenance for properties. To qualify for this tax exemption, the income rent levels, as they've said, the qualifying amount would be 60% of the area median income. However, at Woodleaf Village, when it was developed, the rents are restricted at 50%, which by HUD standard is considered very low income rents. So regardless of the ownership of this property, the rent income will continue to remain at 50% through 2048, and that is by, through compliance with Oregon Housing and Community Services. So in November of 2017, Cornerstone was fortunate to form a partnership with Peak Capital. This has been a This has been a great partnership, as both Cornerstone and Peak are mission-driven to provide affordable housing for hard-working families and individuals on limited income. While the ownership of Woodleaf was transferred to Peak, Cornerstone has remained the provider of resident services that promote personal growth and economic independence for people who call Woodleaf home. And I couldn't be more proud than to hear that beautiful little girl talk about the things that are happening at Woodleaf. Without Peak's investment in Woodleaf, the upcoming capital repairs, which includes 61 new roofs, would have required significant funding from either the city of Eugene, the state of Oregon, or both. So we have freed up that resource for other projects that can be completed in our community. Without the low-income rental housing tax, property tax exemption, the Woodleaf, Woodley Village would struggle to have a positive cash flow. And as you all know, we have a housing crisis in our community. We should be doing everything we can to encourage partnerships like the ones between Cornerstone and Peak. It doesn't matter who provides, owns, or develops affordable housing in our community. What matters is we get busy creating opportunities to build more. I'm asking that you extend this exemption because in doing so, you support local families who are struggling to make ends meet in our community.
Thank you. Eric Jackson, followed by Christina Chapman. No? No, Christi, oh, there we go, oh, good.
Had to whet the whistle. Hi, how are you? My name's Eric Jackson. I've addressed many of you at various meetings. This is the first city council meeting I've come to. I am now a 105-day Oregon resident. I came here, I expected to be in Portland, and Eugene has attracted my eye for many reasons. It's community more than anything else. I'm from big communities. My last community was Denver, four times the population. Before that, it was Philadelphia, and before that, it was New York City. So this is like slowly but surely getting to a tight community. You guys also have a community of homeless people. And I hate to use that word, but it seems to be the only thing that sends the message because the unhoused is what they really are. And the housing handicaps is what they have in some cases, whether it be a mild criminal record, whether it be a 585 credit score, whether it be not enough money to put down on a security deposit, or not being sure that their social security check is actually going to cover the income. So places like Woodley, yeah, given the tax break, I definitely agree with that. But there's got to be other things, like the young lady before me said, other initiatives to try and create low-income housing, other initiatives to try and create less criminalization. Banning sleep encourages drug use. Banning sleep keeps methamphetamine dealers in business. Making somebody fearful of sleeping in their community, wherever it is, whenever it is, encourages them to use illegal drugs. Banning sleep's got to be the first thing you got to stop because it's terrible. Banning people from parks, sitting on the grass, reading a book, enjoying themselves, if they're not creating a mess or creating problem, and they're just snoring, I'd choose to leave that person alone because I don't see any direct criminal activity. But here, I know dozens of people that have gotten ticketed for just that, and it's not a good idea. Park bans, put people on your city streets. Park bans issued by officers, I'm not going to hit heavy on that because I'm going to talk to chief about that at another time, and sit down and possibly the city manager and parks management. Park bans by officers, they're not really constitutional, and it's been proven in many sightings, including my city of Denver, by me. And I'm working on it now here. So please consider what I've said and keep doing your due. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Chapman, followed by Kimberly Gladen.
I'm also speaking about the homeless. I have lost my motorhome confiscated by the police three months ago. I have now got nine tickets, two bans, just for sleeping. This town is ruining people's records, and you guys want everybody to go out and get a job, but when people see that on your record, and it looks like you committed an actual crime when all you did was get some rest, and like Eric said, keeps the drugs alive. Because if we're afraid to sleep, what are we supposed to do? So we're out there drinking pots and pots of caffeine just to stay awake, when all we want to do is sleep. I wake up every other day to cops complaining about me sleeping. But this honestly does not make sense. But there has been nights I've stayed up just to keep my dog warm, just to keep her safe, just to ensure that she doesn't get harassed. She's completely illegal now, but this is ruining my record as far as getting housing and as far as getting a job. I'm on SSI, I'm on disability, should have had surgery six years ago. There is no place for people to recuperate after surgery. These homeless people are dying as a result of what the city is doing. It just needs to change. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you. And our final speaker is Kimberly Gladen.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Gladen, as you well know. I live in downtown. And first I want to say, planners over at the bus station, nice first step. However, I still want to see the area made non-smoking for the health and well-being of every child and every adult in this community. Secondhand smoke is poison, and the teens sitting over there shouldn't be smoking marijuana or cigarettes, either one. So first step, but I want to see a smoking ban on that strip at the bus station because that's everyone's corridor. I came tonight mainly to speak in response to Betty's television interview there. I would like to see you do something about the aggressive panhandling. I feel I have a right to be down the street to bring food home from the grocery store without somebody screaming swear words at me or being nasty. I'm a low-income person, I live in HUD housing, and I've been telling you for the last 10 years to do something about the aggressive panhandling downtown. I've been asking you to do something about the open drug deals downtown. Last Wednesday on my way home from the store, I not only got aggressively panhandled by somebody, but when I got to the corner of Olive and Broadway in front of the By Two Mart, there was a guy in the center of the sidewalk shooting up. This is nine o'clock at night. And there are families on the street, they don't need to see that. I'm also encouraging you to take a good look at what goes on in the courthouse on Saturdays. There are tents set up over there, camping tents, you can't see into what's going on. There's open drug use, I've heard that from many visitors who are shocked at what's going on over there. And a week ago, someone else pointed out a couple guys that are known sex traffickers working over there. Perfect place to get young person high, the many runaways we get in this town, and recruit them into that life. And the guys are known, two guys in a silver Chrysler with fancy rims. I mean, they're over there on the weekends. So, and Emily, I really think you should go over there, spend a weekend over there and see what goes on. The amount of garbage, as a taxpayer, I shouldn't have to pay to clean that up. If anything, I think our county commissioner should pay out of their own pockets for it. I think they should also pay for bathrooms over there if they're going to run a drug fest. I do think something needs to be done. We're losing businesses downtown. And no business can operate when a family sees somebody shooting up on the sidewalk, they're not going to come back to downtown. When our many visitors walk away with the impression that they've been harassed by people on the streets, or that they've seen that kind of stuff, they're not going to come back. You know, that's what they're going to tell people about in Eugene that they see. So I'd like you to do something about it, Betty.
Thank you. Thank you. And that closes the public forum. Do I have councillors who wish to make any comments? I have councillor Syret first, and then councillor Pryor. Take it away.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone who came to speak and gave us important things to think about. I wanted to just respond to the public comment from Woodley Village regarding the tax exemption. I believe it's on our consent agenda, so unless a councillor votes to pull that, we may not speak to it specifically. So I just wanted to thank you for your testimony, thank you for the communication from Mr. Nessler to the city manager, I did read through that, and I just wanted to point out, oftentimes folks in, in my ward, sometimes with good cause, talk about the dispersal policy and ask, why aren't affordable housing being built in the South Hills? And just the other day, at the River Road Santa Clara Community Workshop, I pointed out, thinking of Woodley Village, that there is actually affordable housing dispersed throughout our city, and some of it was built so long ago, we forget that it's even there. And I think Woodley Village is in fact an example of that, of an investment we made many years ago that's kind of forgotten about, except when it comes before council for this kind of action. And so I want to thank Homes for Good and the folks from the Woodleaf LLC for coming tonight to remind us of the good work there, and also to Mr. Nessler and Ella for coming and sharing your stories about how much you love living in that community. Thank you.
Councillor Pryor?
Yeah, ditto to all of that, and, and thank you to everybody who came and spoke this evening. But something that resonated particularly for me is I can remember 20 years ago, working the entire Memorial Day weekend at Springfield City Hall after the Thurston shooting. Four people were dead, 26 injured, and we had to manage an entire community response to that shooting, which reminds me that we are not immune from violence here. It may happen in Colorado, it may happen in other places, but it has also happened here. And so I'm very moved by Maddie coming to, to say, we as students really fear for our safety in classrooms. And we're not talking about the giant issue, we're really talking about the focused issue of school safety. And I would very much like to see the resolution that she handed to the city manager, because I think even though most of what can be done tangibly has to be done at the state level, we have already demonstrated that cities, through the advocacy of their intergovernmental relations process, can help to make things happen at the state level. And so I think, as she said very articulately, sometimes the first step of the statewide journey begins here locally. And so I would like to see us take that up and, and take a look at that and see what we can do with it. Thank you very much for coming.
Any, any other comments? Betty? Oh, councillor Taylor, sorry.
Thank you. Speaking of people sleeping, and councillor Pryor just mentioned asking the state to do something, we need state-supported shelters, places for people to go indoors to sleep so that they don't have to sleep on the grass of the park, which can be fun sometimes, but not, not when it's raining. Thanks to everyone who spoke, I wanted to especially mention David Peggioni for saying something that needed to be said, I think, about the audit. Thank you.
Any other comments? I also just want to thank everyone for speaking. It is helpful to hear you speak to us, even when you're telling us things that we may not exactly want to hear, but it's important for us to hear it. We appreciate it, and we do pay attention, and, and we know where we are working on, and how to provide housing for people, and very concerned about school safety. So thank you all for coming, and that closes the public forum. And I think we are ready to go on to our regular council business. And first up is the consent calendar.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Okay, thank you very much, that passes. And now we are, I'm going to open, we have a public hearing. Ordinance concerning rodents and prohibiting the feeding of wildlife, manager, if you want to address that?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is, we often have called the Wildlife Feeding Ordinance. And this is a public hearing on proposed changes to the city's nuisance code, and the proposed language would prohibit the feeding of wildlife and provide examples of prohibited conditions that attract rodents. And the purpose of these changes is to add code language that would address a growing concern regarding the increase in turkeys and rats.
Okay, so I am opening a public hearing, and we'll just remind everyone of the rules here. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer, the red light indicates the end of three minutes. And our first speaker is Ralph McDonald, followed by Dana Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. I'm Ralph McDonald, I'm a resident of Eugene in Betty Taylor's Ward Two. I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission, I'm co-chair of the South, South Hills Neighborhood Association. I'm speaking tonight on my own behalf. I want to thank Emily Semple for introducing our Wildlife Feeding Committee and the Sustainability Commission, to have a chance to look at that, and for help on the issue. I also want to thank councillor Alan Zelenka for, in our, in the fall, at our Sustainability Commission retreat, talking about how the Sustainability Commission needs to be more proactive in bringing ideas to the council table on various issues of sustainability. Our Wildlife Committee has attempted to do that in the last two months, since April 18th, we've met a number of times, and we've had a variety of invited guests and stakeholders addressing our committee. But our Wildlife Policy Committee hasn't had a chance to bring any proposals to the full Sustainability Commission, so the first thing we're asking is that, that we, we'll next meet on June 20th, that we have an opportunity to do that, and to, for the Sustainability Commission, if they elect to, to bring ideas to the full council. Some of the things that we have discussed are adding a prohibition of the city's internal use of anticoagulant rat poisons. There's going to be a, a education campaign about, around rats in conjunction with the policy changes on the city code. And the city can internally ban rat poisons, and can also educate the public about how the anticoagulant rat poisons make the critter wander in the grass and then prey to cats, dogs, hawks, and owls, and have many secondary kills. Many cities in California have enacted this ban, many cities nationwide have. I've included in your packet a city of Moore Park example of such an ordinance. It doesn't have to be strict, there can be a provision that in an emergency, the city can use anticoagulants in sewers, and that, that could be part of an ordinance, and some cities in California do have an escape clause or emergency clause to that regard. Another issue is the issue of preemption by this Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, and I don't have time to go into that, it's in the information we provided. Or under Oregon Home Rule, the city has a lot of discretion in that area, and, but, but on the other hand, the Department of Wildlife has been charged specifically with occupied field or body of, of law in that, in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dana Ferguson, followed by Joyce Gallagher.
Hi, my name is Dana Ferguson, I'm in Ward Two, Betty Taylor's Ward. I'm on the Wildlife Committee with Ralph, but I'm here tonight speaking on my own behalf on the rodent control and wildlife feeding ban. The most productive and positive way to gain citizen cooperation in rodent control and wildlife feeding is through education in coexistence with wildlife and rodents rather than through an ordinance with fines. The goal is to increase resident and pet safety and to decrease wildlife rodent attractiveness. Cities that have used various, cities have used various methods to do this, educational forums, citywide mailers, continuing education and outreach, solicitation of resident feedback, door hangers to all residents, handouts at, at city facilities, and city staff or volunteers talking to residents about, at city facilities. Most important, the city could create an urban wildlife specialist position to facilitate education, outreach, and attractant reduction. As regards rodents specifically, the Center for Poison Regulation- As regards rodents specifically, the Center for Poison Regulation says that mice and rats infesting houses, garages, or other structures present a public health concern, but rodenticides do not eradicate rodents and may not reduce the numbers for long. If there is an area-wide problem, rodents from the edges move into the available spaces vacated by the poisoned rodents. Rodent numbers surge when we leave unpicked fruit on trees and pet food outside. Rodents find shelter when we ignore clutter and overgrown vines and allow access inside houses and garages. The best way to reduce rodent populations is to eliminate factors that allow rodents to reproduce and thrive. It's true that all rodenticides are toxic to wildlife, and should not be placed in areas where that non-target wildlife has access to them. What's unique about the anticoagulants, the S-G-A-Rs, is that rodents frequently eat more than a single dose of them, and the effects of that dose are often delayed for a few days. Meanwhile, the rodents may continue to eat more poison, resulting in a super-lethal dose that builds up in their tissue. And then, as Ralph said, when they're preyed on, they're so full of poison that they are very poisonous to anything that preys on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce Gallagher, followed by Michi Okuda.
Hi there, my name is Joyce Gallagher, and I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. I'm against a feeding ban personally. I'm here because I read Ralph McDonald's article, a critter proposal, in last week's Eugene Weekly. I agree with his proposal that the council ban the use of poisons by Eugene departments. What Mr. McDonald wrote about rat poisons was particularly interesting to me, because birds that eat carrion also die when they eat poisoned rats. In the past few months, I've noticed that there aren't many crows around, but flocks of crows have been part of our neighborhood for years. I can't help but wonder why they're not around. I enjoy seeing turkeys, squirrels, deers, and other critters in my backyard. The deer would like to eat my roses, but I put up a seasonal deer fence that uses mesh that keeps my roses safe. I believe that critters have the right to live here, too. Let's be considerate and thoughtful in how we deal with them. Please consider banning poisons whenever that's possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michi Okuda, followed by Julie Tanet.
Hi, my name is Michi Okuda, and I used to live in South Eugene, which has forested areas and residential and parklands. And I took it on myself to get a wildcat population under control. Okay, so I spayed and neutered, and we brought in an expert cat person, and they're outdoor kitties. They became my kitties, okay? So I'm feeding them outside. And there are other critters there. You know, we're right up against parkland and forested land, and there are raccoons, there are possum, there are deer. Well, you know, deer obviously don't eat cat food, but the other critters are coming and eating. And what I found was there was cooperation between them. This is very interesting, that the raccoons and the cats actually cooperated and made sure that everybody was fed. And my cat, actually, the sentry, would not allow the other cats a lot of food, because raccoons had to eat. And the problem there is that because of the rat poisons and rodent poisons, they're not, cats and raccoons aren't eating those rodents. Because once one gets poisoned, and I had two or three die kidney failure from eating poisoned rodent, and I had another one get very sick last summer, and it pooped out this rodent fur, and was much better that day. And so it quit eating the rodents. So your natural control agents for the rodents, the cats, the raccoons, and I'm not sure about possum, maybe, are no longer there. And so this is bigger issue than, you know, it's like you're working with, okay, development is pushing the critters into more residential areas. They're looking for food, okay? They see cat food, because they can no longer eat the rodents, they no longer have habitat to live in. And so it's much more involved than one or the other issue. But yes, my cats are not eating rodents anymore because of the poisons of the rodents, and I doubt that the raccoons are either. So it's not what I expected to say, but that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Tanet, our final speaker.
Council members, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. My name's Julie Tanet. My family currently resides on the outskirts of Eugene, and we also own property in both the Friendly Neighborhood and in the Hendricks Parks area. I'm here today to also voice my personal opposition to this proposed wildlife feeding ban, and to raise my concern to the Eugene community that this feeding ban is, in fact, a precursor to the trapping and killing of most of the wild turkeys in our community. Killing all the turkeys because we don't like them doesn't feel right to me, and it doesn't feel like the compassionate, forward-thinking, green Eugene that I know and think you know and love. You may disagree and say, this is just an ordinance to stop people from feeding the wildlife. So I went through and I looked at the work sessions again. So at the February 28th council work session, you heard comments from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife Biologists, who offered to trap and kill the wild turkey flocks, but only if a feeding ban was in place. Then at the April 11th council work session, Councilmember Evans said, by us enacting an ordinance, that would give them the ability to come in and do some control measures. And how can we make sure that that happens? Also, again, at the April 25th council work session, Councilmember Pryor said, so I support moving these forward, because it will result in a trapping program. And taken all together in context, I believe that it is the intent to lay the groundwork for a turkey eradication program. And I don't believe that our community would support the wholesale killing of these birds, and most importantly, I don't think it's our best and only option. So one alternative I would suggest to you is to refer this to the Sustainability Commission, and to give them the time to provide you with alternatives. There are folks that worry about things like livability for our citizens and the triple bottom line, and they use relevant words like ecology. They might be able to look at what other municipalities have done in a larger context related to deer as well as turkeys. Why not allow that body time to develop some further recommendations to present to the council for your consideration? We moved here more than 20 years ago because we loved Eugene and the green, eco-friendly community. Sometimes the easiest way isn't the best way, and sometimes it requires a little more work and input and imagination to find a new and more compassionate way. And I'm asking the council to seek a more compassionate path, and not enact a feeding ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, looks like we have one more. Thank you. And our final speaker will be Kristi McElroy.
Hi, my name is Kristi McElroy, and I am a citizen of Eugene, and I live in Betty's Ward. And this is the first time I've ever talked about anything in front of city council, so a little bit nervous here. But this one really kind of got me going, because I like seeing the turkeys. But liking seeing the turkeys, to me, was not enough reason to come up and say anything, so I did some research and found some interesting things about turkeys, like the fact that they attack carpenter ant nests, that's one of their favorite treats, that they, one turkey can eat 200 ticks a day. I don't like taking my dog up Pisgah and coming back and having to pick ticks off the dog. I'd rather see a flock of turkeys eating those ticks than me picking them off my dog. In regards to them making a pass through my yard every once in a while, well, since the turkeys have been around, I don't seem to have as much of a problem with slugs and And I really appreciate that. So all told, I think that a wildlife feeding ban is not the best approach to the issue of turkeys, which I don't have an issue with turkeys, but I understand that some other people do. And then just with regards to doing an ordinance, and reading the actual terminology of the ordinance, saying that you can't place, deposit, distribute, store, or scatter food, or anything that would attract wildlife, which includes deer, raccoon, turkeys, bears, cougars, coyotes, and wolves. Well, if people are worried like about their host to get and eaten, then you could potentially say that somebody was in violation of the ordinance for planting something in their yard that the deer like to eat. You know what I'm saying? Like, it just strikes me as illogical altogether to address this issue in this way, kind of And then I guess the last thing is, you know, the whole thing of including bears and cougars and coyotes and wolves, and I sat there and thought, well, what the heck do these things eat? You know? Well, first of all, they eat some of the things that, you know, they might eat a deer, they might eat a raccoon, they might eat a turkey, and, you know, that would be a step in the right direction for people who want to see fewer of those things. But then also with this ordinance, you know, if some neighbor's pesky kid kept riding their bike up and down in front of your house, and it bugged you, you could say, hey, get rid of that kid, because that could attract a bear or a cougar. That's potential food. Anyhow, that's it. Hope, you know, to end it on a note with some humor, but it's really not humorous. I hope that you just don't do this. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes all the speakers in the public hearing. Do we have counselors who need to, Counselor Serret, and Counselor Zelenka?
Thank you, everyone who came to give public comment at our public hearing. We are not scheduled to take action on this this evening. And I have to say, given the number of emails and advocacy we got from folks proclaiming what a destructive force the wild turkeys were in their neighborhood, I'm surprised we haven't had anyone come here in person tonight to speak at this public hearing on the very thing we hope to implement to help address that concern. So I'm not sure where that leaves me in terms of my support for this ordinance as a path forward, keeping an open mind. I will say, I don't think the motivation of this council is to eliminate all the turkeys in Eugene, but to have some ability to control the negative impact that we've been provided public comment mainly through emails about what occurs when a large population of them gather in one location, in some cases because they are being provided with food by the humans in that area. I did receive public comment from at least one constituent in my ward, because my ward is not plagued by turkeys. But this person did ask that raccoons be included, because there was a resident nearby who was, who is still insisting on feeding raccoons in the park, which has caused problems for that area and that part of the park and neighborhood. In terms of enforcement, with pretty much all of our code, we do a lot of education and outreach prior to any kind of enforcement or fines. That is the methodology that we use as a city with our code compliance, whether it would be something related to this ban if we passed it, or something related to maintaining your yard, or garbage on your property, or any of those things. So that is the way that we manage those things. And then I just wanted to say, ma'am, the reason you haven't seen crows in flocks in the past couple of months is because they've been pairing off and raising their young. So they'll come back together as flocks when they're done. In fact, we have two little fledgeses in our courtyard right here of crows being raised. And then lastly, I have a question for the city manager, because we did receive some emails today and over the weekend about an anticoagulant rule adoption. And I wasn't sure where that was coming from, and I don't know if you have any idea, or if it's because the Sustainability Commission has been discussing it.
I don't. I'll have to check with our folks to see if they've been looking into it or not, and we'll get back with you.
Okay, thank you very much. I would be interested in learning more about that.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I was wondering when we were going to take action on this. I don't seem to see wildlife feeding ordinance as an action.
We haven't scheduled pending this public hearing, and so then we would, our intent would be to schedule it.
Before break?
That would be our intent at this time, yes.
Good, thanks. That's what I expected.
Okay, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. I think rats are the big problem, but it's been suggested to me that we should also ban the feeding of rats. And the person who suggested that is in the audience somewhere. But I think that we should educate people about feeding turkeys, but not ban it. I was, I was one of the people who said we should ban feeding. For a few times, I said it, but I've seen other points of view, and I changed my mind pretty much. But the rats are a real health problem, and that's where we started talking. And we, I don't think education is enough. I think we should, and I don't think poisons, I agree that we should ban the poison, but there are ways to trap rats and dispose of them without poison. And I think we should look into that. I think it's a public health hazard, and the city should do something about it. And the wildlife feeding, I have almost come, totally changed my mind. I'm still open to persuasion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, oh, Counselor Semple.
Thank you. Thank to everyone who came. The rats were my proposal here, and I'm not in favor of a wildlife feeding ban. I am in favor of a rat feeding ban, and I think that that should be included if we are going to have an ordinance. I'm really concerned about the poison, you know, I'm, it's really yucky about what it does to animals, and I would rather see us trap and kill them than poison them, regardless of the bad effects down the line as they get eaten. I've also heard that there's contraceptive food for rats, and I wouldn't mind if we fed them that. So I'm wondering if we feel like we've heard enough? Do we want to keep the record open another week? Because we haven't heard from a bunch of sides that started this.
It's not a record.
It's not a record, whatever it is, hearing.
It's just a legislative decision that's in front of you, so.
So we don't have to.
So people could continue to offer input up until you make your decision, whenever you choose to do that. So people are more than welcome to send in additional comments. They can come during other public forums and speak on the issue as well.
I'm always learning new things.
Okay, not that part.
Did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Counselor Zelenka.
The reason rats aren't in this ordinance is because we have a completely different place for rats in the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
And does that ordinance, remind me, already prohibits feeding rats?
Yeah, we have actually quite a bit of, and I don't think the code provisions were included in this packet. We could certainly do that. There's a whole other section that covers that. We don't need to explicitly, we don't need to add another prohibition on feeding rats.
Right, because we already have that in a different place.
Yes, correct.
Related to other critters.
This was intended to get at, yes, some of the other animals.
Right, because we already deal with rats, effectively.
Correct.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. I think that closes out that part of our meeting, and we are ready to go on to an update. Public safety response to council questions.
Ms. Mayor, and Chief Skinner will give us a quick overview. And I just want to mention real quickly is, as we continue to think about different ways to provide information back to the council, respond to information that you're asking for, sometimes we do that in memo, sometimes a work session, but we're also sort of experimenting with just spending a couple minutes in response during a regular council meeting. So that's why you're seeing this as a little bit different than what we've seen before.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. It is a pleasure to be with you here tonight, first time in council. Hopefully, one of many conversations we'll have. I'm here tonight to follow up on a couple of questions that were asked, I believe, during one of the council workshops that Counselor Pryor asked, and we wanted to make sure we closed the loop and got back with you, sir, and council members, to make sure that we answered any questions that you may have as a result of that work session. So I'm going to talk about a couple of different things. One is going to talk about technology solution that I proposed, or at least to start taking a look at to help us with some of the issues we're seeing downtown and throughout the city. And then the second one is- And then the second one is going to talk a little bit about some, some laws that might provide for a safety or exclusionary type of environment in the downtown core at the discretion of our magistrate or our judge. And so we'll talk about both of those things. As you can imagine, the downtown has been front and center in a lot of my discussions that I've had over the last several weeks. If you follow me on Twitter, which I have 158 followers now, so I'm super excited. But if you follow me on Twitter, I've been kind of memorializing some of those great conversations I'm having, mostly with downtown business owners about what they're seeing and trying to get really a sense of what's going on and the types of criminal behavior that's going on. And in some cases, some of the concerns about behavior that's not criminal, but behavior that is maybe unwelcome and unwanted in the downtown core. We're building a strategy to try and address that, and I want to say thank you to, initially to the Budget Committee in this council for recognizing a need and putting forth a motion that would help us fill the gap for that need in the short term. But we are building a strong strategy to start trying to address the downtown core in the, in the not-so-distant future, and certainly that is one of many steps to make sure that that's sustainable. But a couple of those areas are recognizing that video technology is deeply rooted in police culture. If you think about what we have now, in-car videos, dash cams, and how that has enhanced our ability to prosecute certain crimes and hold people accountable, and more recently the body cam videos, which are videotaping people in their most vulnerable states and in their most private settings to create a better sense of accountability for law enforcement and building trust with our community. It goes on and on and on when we talk about the video types of capabilities that we have. One of those opportunities, I think, can help us in our downtown core, and I think it can help us around the city. I think about my time up in the Portland metro area in Hillsborough, where we had TriMet platforms that were being plagued with car prowls, just, just a horrible problem. Anytime you have 500 cars sitting there for eight hours a day, the criminal element just really takes advantage of that, and how we were able to solve and deter some of those, some of those crimes through a strong video surveillance presence. And so what you'll see up on the screen is an initial proposal. We're right in the middle of the RFP portion of trying to gather information because of the cost that'll take three bids, and we're working on this. This is not a comprehensive PowerPoint, but it's something for, for us to be able to have at least an initial discussion on. I have called them guardian trailers because this is purposeful to not secretly watch people, but to overtly let you know that behavior is being, being held accountable in the downtown core. There's a variety of technical specs that are going to be advantageous to us, and we're wading through those right now and coming up with kind of a game plan on operationally how these would be deployed. It is my vision that the deployment schedule of these, if, if purchased, would be deeply rooted in crime analysis as well as, as, on a complaint basis by our business owners in areas downtown. I can tell you right now that without even looking at crime analytics, I could tell you where these need to be based on, on spending time downtown and just anecdotally talking to business owners and residents from that, from that area. So we are moving forward with the RFP to see if we can find something that, that makes sense. This is a great example of what we're talking about. This one is a solar-powered system, which may or may not make sense in Oregon, but certainly sustainable and greener than some of the other options. You can see some of the, some of the details on the left. That is just a few of many, but generally speaking, what you see here is an opportunity to be able to have a mobile video surveillance or a video platform that I can move around downtown and I can move around the city. Think about the tremendous advantages during our holiday shopping season when we have the big retailers struggling with, with car prowls and/or shoplifting, to be able to come in and have a presence in those parking lots and, and put up the, the video surveillance and, and have an opportunity to actually deter crime before it even happens. And then the event that the, that the crime does happen gives us a tremendous opportunity to identify the suspects and actually have successful prosecutions, which is a piece of the system that we, that we like so much. Another option is something that's a little more robust. This is kind of an all-season nighttime. It's a, it's a redundant system that operates on solar battery and generator. It's a little bigger, as you can see, and a little bit more difficult to get around, but yet it's still mobile. And the, and the key to this is to brand these, openly brand these things so that, again, they're not covert. They're very overt, putting them in plain view, letting people know that they can have a sense of feeling of safety and security as they, as they're in their downtown core. And I see this as being a tremendous tool of many that we need to try and get our arms around what's going on in the downtown core. So that is, hopefully, answers some of the questions that we have from that Councilor Pryor had asked, just as kind of where we're going and how we're marching through this. Again, this, this is one of many strategies that we're talking about. I don't want to come up and tell you that this is the answer to our problems because it's not. This is one of many strategies we're talking about to be able to deal with what, what we would like to, to deal with downtown. And so I'm, I'm super excited about the possibility of going down this path as a, as an option. The second piece is the identifying those, the criminal behavior that exists downtown that would provide an opportunity to exclude certain people when convicted of that particular behavior. We've landed on five crime types in that, and they are assault, and understand that there's several levels of assault, four levels of assault, for instance. And this is going to test my Oregon law, so it's been seven years since I've been here, so we'll see how well I do. There's four levels of assault, so that is one of them. Disorderly conduct is another one. Intimidation, which is basically, folds in intimidation one and two folds in a lot of our hate and bias crimes and the types of behavior that occurs as a result of, that is perpetuated or motivated by, by a protected class. Harassment is another one, which is essentially offensive physical contact. If I walked up to you, Councilor Pryor, and I pushed you, you would be able to have me arrested for harassment as offensive physical contact. Or harassment in the second degree is if I treated you in a manner that was purposefully trying to incite a violent response from you, screaming and yelling at you, certain slurs, those kinds of things, trying to incite a violent response, that would be harassment as well. And then the last one is menacing, which essentially is placing you in fear by my conduct, placing you in fear of serious physical imminent, serious physical injury or death. And so those five of where we have landed, that I think Judge Allen is comfortable with being able to have the discretion to exclude people if convicted of those crimes. And I think that's, again, one piece of many in helping us to try and turn the corner on what's going on in the downtown core. So I'm gonna let that settle right there. Happy to answer any questions that council may have at this point.
Questions? Councilor Evans? Councilor Semple? Council Pryor?
Yeah, thanks, Chief. Couple of things real quickly. Once you've acquired that data, how long do we keep the data? One. And then, two, do you have, are we going to assign a CSO or another individual to review that data to be able to kind of drill down and find out, you know, specifically who are the chronic perpetrators are and, you know, deal with that from that perspective?
Sure, sir. Thank you. So when you talk about data, you're talking about the video piece of that. So if I, and Catherine can help me out, if I, if I'm correct, the minimum retention period on that is going to be 30 days. Is that good? Oh, man, 30 days. And so we can keep that longer. But my, my vision for this is, in fact, what you've talked about. Our CSOs, I believe, are underutilized in the downtown core, and we have the ability to have CSOs that can monitor and/or administer this program. Part of what makes this, this effective is not only a deterrent, which is the first and foremost benefit of this, is a deterrent so that we, people aren't committing crimes to begin with. In the event that we have a significant event that requires law enforcement intervention, we have the ability to go back and look at the video to see if we can identify suspects. And ultimately, if a crime has been committed, it may be captured on the video, and we save a lot of time in the prosecution phase. We've seen that over time with in-car video and dash cams, or dash cam and body worn videos really, really help with that. But maybe even more important is as we deploy resources downtown with smartphones and tablets, which is a piece of the, of the deployment strategy, is that any given time officers are able to, because these are all IP-based video feeds, they're able to remote in and just see what's going on. So you could be several blocks away dealing with an issue and want to check in on, for instance, Keyzee Square and see how it looks, see if there's large groups congregating, seeing, seeing if, if things are going well, and you can, you are going to be able to do that. So it really spreads our resources around the downtown core much more efficiently than what we have right now where they, it's line of sight type of supervision. So I think that program has yet to be developed based on the technical capabilities of the product we land on. And so, but I do think that the CSOs are a big piece of being able to help us monitor and administer the program.
Councilor Semple.
Thank you. How far away do they record?
Well, again, the, we will, we would have to dig into the specific technical specs once we land on a product. My hope is that we purchase two or three of these that we can deploy in several different areas. What, what happens is, is they're remotely controlled, so we can tilt, pan, and zoom based on the need, and they're fairly robust, so you can record from quite a distance. But the whole point is to try and identify the problem area that we have, stand one up and just have it static to record or to monitor that particular area. But if there was something, in fairness, if there was something that was down the block that was of concern, we would have the ability to adjust that if we needed to.
Would it be monitored like that a lot? Because that sounds much more expensive than just having it static recording.
No, it, most of these come with that capability, the pan, tilt, zoom. They, they generally don't sell a product anymore of, of this nature that doesn't do those things. I don't think it's going to cost anymore. What I would tell you is that we would not, we would not engage in a lot of different people trying to access the system and doing the pan, tilt, and zoom. We would land on where we want it to, where we want it to watch, what we want it to guard, and then we would leave it there and do that. In the event that we saw something, if for some reason somebody was remoting in and saw something going on kind of off in the corner and needed to see that, they could pan, tilt, and zoom and just make sure that it's what they thought it was, and then bring it back to what we're trying to keep, keep an eye on downtown.
So they can move it mobily? You don't have to be back at the office? So it wouldn't be that we'd have somebody sitting there watching it?
No.
I'm not worried about getting the capability to pan, tilt.
It's not my intent to, to hire somebody at an hourly wage to sit there and stare at a screen. No.
Right. That's good. Any rough idea of the difference in costs between the little one and the big one?
You could spend as little as $15,000 to $20,000 and as much as $85,000, depending on what you're, the capabilities you're looking for. So I, I understand, my sense of what I would like to go is, is I want, I want capabilities for what we're trying to accomplish, and I want to be able to get as many of them as I can to not only meet the needs of downtown, but if we have needs elsewhere in the city that we don't have to pull them out of downtown and move them somewhere else.
Sounds like some good thinking. I saw the little one, and I thought, oh, I can see people bashing that in, but I guess they'd be recorded doing that.
Well, yeah, we'd be recording the bashing. And, you know, it's, it's not uncommon for a police department to have equipment that is going to be vandalized, that's part of it. We would certainly hope that that doesn't happen, but I know that that's going to be part of it. It's going to be well-branded. They're going to know that it's Eugene Police Department that owns it, and so, you know, it's one of those acceptable risks in my, in my opinion, based on the, the outcomes.
And then regarding the exclusions of the five things, and I know having the ordinance is partly a deterrent, but you have any idea of how many arrests we are making under those five categories? So, you know, how many people a month would have been excluded? That would be pretty interesting to know.
That, I do not have that data, but we have that data available to us, and I can get that and send that to you because I think that's a great question.
I have difficulty with exclusion zones, but I have difficulty with these crimes also. So it would be interesting to know what the actual effect would be disregarding the deterrent effect, because we don't have that.
And to a certain extent, based on some crimes, we already have some exclusions going on. For instance, if you are, if you're convicted of a crime at a large retailer, over and over again, there have been exclusions of those people being able to come back to that particular retailer for those types of things. So there's various levels of exclusions that are happening throughout the city based on judges' orders.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Council Pryor.
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation, Chief Skinner. I think this really answers pretty much all the questions I had with regard to the trailers. I'm very intrigued with what we can do there, and I know this is very preliminary, so I won't go beyond what's already been talked about, but I'm, I'm very encouraged. With regard to the notion of safety around behavior, which is, which is really where my interest was, it's my understanding that we're not talking about having to create anything new, that we're actually working within many of the procedures and systems that are already in place within the municipal court system, the police department, and the others. And one of the advantages to that is you don't have to somehow solicit buy-in from all the different partners who might be involved. They are already instituting this, and what this, what we're really striving to do is to provide greater clarity and intentionality around these specific behaviors. So, and you can confirm this for me, but my understanding is, if you don't see an item on that list, such as selling drugs or engaging in prostitution or stealing, doesn't mean we're, we're not suddenly going to be enforcing those. We will, but they'll work through a whole different legal process than what we're talking about here. And, and what I like about having this specific list is, somebody had mentioned earlier about being criminalized for sleeping. Sleeping's not on the list. You wouldn't wind up being excluded for sleeping, and it's not my intention of, of trying to create some sort of a sweep of all the people out of downtown. It's really not who you are, it's what you're doing. And sleeping doesn't rise to that level, but I think the, the items on your list very much do, because the, the bulk of the complaints I receive are about those kinds of behaviors. And I think that's really what, for me, was my whole desire in asking the question, what, what could we do around that? So I'm, I'm very encouraged that we could create, and it's not really an exclusion zone in the old-fashioned sense of the term. It's really more of a matter of a judge's discretion to be able to apply something they're already applying, but creating greater understanding, intentionality, and clarity around when it gets applied and how it gets applied. And I think leaving that up to the courts to do that, rather than trying to create some one-size-fits-all system, probably is a better way to go. So what I'm, what I'm taking the long way around to say is, I really applaud and appreciate your desire to be real thoughtful and careful and deliberate as you work to develop these, these strategies to try to get at some real serious problems we have downtown, but not do it in a way that creates problems even as you solve other ones. So I like everything you're doing, and I can't wait to see the other solutions that you have.
I, sir, I appreciate your comments. I think one of the things when we talk about this, we have to be careful of, is giving the public the perception that we're not enforcing these crimes now, and this is like a new initiative. The, the investigation and subsequent arrest based on probable cause is happening right now in all parts of our city, for all of these crimes, to include the downtown. To your point, it gives yet another layer of accountability to our special nuances of the downtown core. But as much as I appreciate, again, your, your comments about all the hard work that's being done, this is really a collaborative effort between the PD, its, its partners, and, and the City Attorney's Office, who has been working tirelessly to help us get to yes on a lot of things. And so I want to make sure that I, that I let you know how hard they're working as well.
Councilor Sarett.
Thank you. So my questions or, or comments are more about process, and process is very important in our community, particularly when we're proposing new public safety initiatives. And I think these are, I'm inclined to support these strategies. I think that they're, this one in particular is something new. It's a capital investment, so it's not something we want to go into lightly, but I think, given some of the concerns we have, both in downtown and in some of our parks, I think there is a lot of, there are a lot of places that I could see you deploying this strategy that could be very effective. But before we get to the point where we're putting those on the street, we need to provide opportunity for members of the public who might have concerns about the use of this to weigh in. And I mentioned earlier at our 5:30 meeting, Police Commission meets this Thursday at 5:30 at the police station on Country Club Road, and there is an opportunity for public comment at those meetings. So I'm just putting that out there for folks who might be watching.
We may be at Harris Hall.
Oh.
I think, I, I thought I remember seeing, we have, it seems like I have a Police Commission meeting at Harris Hall on my, let me double-check on that, so I don't want people to show up at the wrong spot. at the wrong spot. I think the Police Commission decided to move to Harris Hall to provide better opportunity for public input. So it's a perfect time to come here, more centrally located, and hear the concerns.
Thank you for offering that. And Counselor Yeh, who also serves on the Police Commission, is confirming she's pretty certain this Thursday's meeting, June 14th, will be here at Harris Hall at 5:30. So I'm just wondering, in terms of that piece, what you're thinking about for, for public input? And then the second one, it sounds like what you're talking about with those five offenses is not a new ordinance, but a coordinated approach that involves our municipal court judge and prosecutors. Would that be correct?
That would be correct, and Catherine would be happy to tell you the process we went through in negotiating that with municipal court, but that, that is my understanding as well.
Great. I would love to hear a little bit about that. Again, I think process is very important. And then I also think that our counsel, you know, Counselor Semple asked a question about currently how are those offenses being dealt with, how many are being arrested for them, convicted. So I do think this council should get data that helps us have an informed understanding of the potential impacts of the program, and so we can talk to constituents about it should questions arise. So if you have something to offer Catherine, that'd be great.
Absolutely, certainly. So right now, and Chief Skinner touched upon this, the judge currently has discretionary authority to make decisions when there's a pretrial release. You can have terms of pretrial release, that's already a part of the judge's authority to do that. And similarly, the judge has the authority to have conditions attached to someone's probation. So those, that's already within the judge's authority. So what we were talking about with the judge and the members of our City Prosecutor's Office is, okay, well, within that existing authority, and we do that, and Chief Skinner gave some examples, we do that geographically as a condition of probation or as a term of pretrial release. Could we, you know, focus on some of the behaviors that are happening downtown that are crimes, that are the arrestable, those are arrestable offenses, so that they are going to have a pretrial opportunity with a defense counsel present, where a pretrial rec, a pretrial release term that would prohibit somebody from going within, let's say, the boundary of a certain area within the downtown? What crimes would those be? And we spoke with the judges, and I didn't personally, we spoke, but we spoke with the judge, some of our police officers, I spoke with the City Prosecutor's Office, to kind of come up with a collection of what those would look like. And those five that Chief Skinner just named off rose to the top. There were a couple other that were on the list that, that actually came off the list because of other concerns that were raised, such as, those are the ones that are most likely to be in our community court, so those weren't on there. So there was a thoughtful process that went into this to decide, what should those be? And so if there was somebody that, and you have a prosecutor that's going to look at individualized the cases, it's not a one-size-fits-all. So you're gonna have a prosecutor who would be making a recommendation on an individualized basis, so let's say, repeat offenses. You know, so you're gonna look at, is there some repetition going on of certain offenses? And then you're gonna have a judge who also is gonna have an analysis done, and as part of the pretrial, like I said, their defense attorney will be there, so they'll have representation. And then on the backside, when you have a conviction, those same type of individualized analysis by the city prosecutor making a recommendation and the judge doing an analysis, if there's gonna be a condition of that person's probation. So it's a part of all their existing authority, but maybe just a little more focused attention, like we're gonna look at these five offenses, and you're gonna have a prosecutor doing an individualized analysis and the judge doing the same thing.
Great, thank you very much, and I really appreciate that approach. I worked for the ACLU of Oregon when we had an exclusion zone, and I stood before the council many times to argue against it because of the due process concerns. And so this is a due process framework that I can feel comfortable with. Thank you.
Counselor Zalinka.
Yeah, on the exclusion zone, I firmly think we should strongly enforce those five crimes that you mentioned. To clarify what you said, the exclusion could occur before conviction.
As a term of pretrial release, correct.
So that's before conviction.
It's before conviction.
So that was the same problem I had with the first exclusion zone, which was, before conviction, you could take someone's rights away. And, and if that's still the case for this, I didn't like the first one, and I probably won't like this one. Unless there is conviction, I don't have a problem doing terms of their probation or after a conviction that they be excluded from downtown. That's, but only after a conviction.
So the distinction is, so right now, that is, the, the term of pretrial release is currently within a judge's authority. So there's nothing new that's, that would be happening. Right now, if a judge is to make an individualized decision on a pretrial release, they can add, by statute, they have the authority to attach terms to that release. And they, so that is currently within their authority. There's nothing that would be asked of you to give that to them. And the other pieces is they have their, there is a, there is a due process component, they've got their defense counsel with them, they're represented, there is a judge making the decision to do it, and you have the prosecutor making the individualized recommendation. So it is, it's different than-
How's that different than what we did before?
There was a, I think Counselor Syret wants to speak to this. It was different in that you, there was, well, there was many different maturation's of the exclusion, so the code looked different over the years, but there, at one point, there was an ability to have someone kind of automatically excluded upon issuance of the citation. And that's not at all what we are talking about here. We are talking about a judge within his or her current authority making a decision on a pretrial release based on an individualized analysis, the recommendation from the prosecutor, and the defense counsel present and representing that person. So it is different.
That's significantly different, yes. Interpress, I'm eager to hear more about that. The concern that I have, and many other people have about the surveillance cameras is privacy and having us step a little bit closer towards big brother government. I think you need to be very clear about the protocols, about how these would be used, how would the police act and how, and where they would be used, and under what circumstances, and the use of the recordings. I don't, even though they're set up, and if they're set up in a public space, you can see that they're there, but that, you don't necessarily get to avoid being in the camera's view. And so that's significantly different for me. So I would be really interested in seeing how all those protocols be put in place. And I guess the question I have is, would those be administrative, or would those be brought back to council?
Our intent would be that they're administrative based on both the Police Commission, who actually has, a couple years ago, went through this protocol conversation, so it might be appropriate to bring some of that back, and the council input on the program as well.
Okay. I think they should come before council, but.
Okay, Counselor Evans.
Yeah, Chief, I wanna go back to a couple things that popped up in my head. One is, is that in terms of best practices, what other cities, municipalities, townships, whatever the case may be, have used this technology, quote-unquote, successfully? And how has that impacted the reduction of crime in those municipalities?
So I have not-
You have any data on that?
Sure, and there's a lot of data that we can mine with respect to that. What I can tell you anecdotally is, I spent a few days in Nashville, Tennessee, at the Major Chiefs Conference and PERF, the Police Executive Research Forum Conference, and listened to large municipalities such as Chicago and Los Angeles PD that have turned things around as a result of having the capability to be able to have a real-time crime center, which utilizes video surveillance to help direct resources and be able to do those things. There are municipalities up and down the I-5 corridor that I know that have this equipment and deploy it successfully. I'm not able to give you statistically if it has been better or worse for them. I can certainly do some research on that and bring you some success stories. I can bring you stories as well, if we find some that it wasn't successful, so that we can kind of get a 360-degree perspective of this, so that we can have the cause-and-effect argument and discussion about it. I'm happy to do that, to be able to meet your needs.
Yeah, I don't wanna slow you down any in this process, but it would be helpful if we had, you know, information that, you know, substantiated the investment that we're making in these, in this technology. And would also kind of point us to what those best practices are, and how, you know, we can best utilize the technology in a way that will enhance your, your efforts at, you know, controlling, you know, criminal behavior in the downtown court, and anyplace else in the community in which these things can be deployed. And another small question, but it's of interest to me, sometimes I know that places have surveillance equipment that may be set up that not really is surveilling anything. It's just there as a, quote-unquote, deterrent.
I can either confirm or deny that that's actually going on.
But you get where I'm coming from, okay.
The ones that were swiped weren't on.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you.
I know people that swipe them.
I don't, I didn't really have any questions, and I didn't know we were having a work session on this, but it seems to have turned into that. So since it's turned into that, I want to express my opinion. I'm very concerned about the privacy issue. I do think that police cars sitting around and police officers are deterrents, but I think we need more discussion about that. And about exclusion, I'm totally opposed. We had an exclusion ordinance, and I always thought it was, people have to be somewhere. And if they're not, if you exclude them from downtown, they're going to be in a park or some other place. And I just want to express my opinion about that. Also, I'm a little concerned about the crimes, because they, they're subject to interpretation. What's harassment to one person is not to another person. Someone else might just laugh it off. And menacing, what that, all of, what all these things mean can be different to different people. But exclusion, we tried that, and I thought it was really terrible. Those people will go some other place. And if we're going to, if council's going to have some effect on this, I think we should have, hear from the public also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, maybe I can just clarify a little bit. This is not the last time the council would see any protocols or process or procedures around the surveillance videos. I don't wanna leave that impression. And so what we would do is be taking this information, put together those protocols, and then would come back to share that with the council. The intent wouldn't be that the council makes some formal approval or disapproval of those, but you would have the input in that, and then that would influence what actually gets put into that. So I didn't wanna leave the impression that you're not gonna see any more of this conversation.
I understand that, but since it has turned into everyone expressing an opinion.
No, I was responding to Counselor Zalinka.
Okay, well, I-
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, more to come, at any rate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report and information. So now we move on to number seven, action. An ordinance concerning waiving off-street parking requirements for the Edison Elementary School site.
And Counselor Zalinka wants to make the motion.
Yes.
It is in my words, though. I ask for privilege of making this motion. I move to adopt Council Bill 5188, an ordinance concerning waiving off-street parking requirements for the Edison Elementary School site.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and that passes. Terrific, thank you very much. And then one more action, a resolution adopting modifications to the regional and local wastewater system development charge methodologies.
I move to adopt a resolution adopting amendments to system development charge methodologies for the wastewater system.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and that passes. And that brings us to a close. Thank you all very much.